When we talk about property taxes, some districts are affected more adversely or even positively with some of the funding formulas than others. So for example, if you hear the term “fair funding formula,” that I’ll let Frank talk about, as we shift money to that formula, that benefits Dallas Town, but the existing formula actually helps Southern and Southeastern. So even here within our own 93rd District, there’s a bit of a double-edged sword, no matter what you do. But I’ll defer to the expert to talk a little bit more about that. A couple of housekeeping things. Normally, when I’m--and Frank’s probably similar--normally, given a presentation, I don’t mind questions as we go. I think because of what I’m going to call the complexity of the topic, we’re going to hold questions till the end. We’ll ask you, if able, to come up to the microphone with those questions. Scott will help facilitate that. If you have a question and for some reason can’t or don’t want to come up to them, we want to be able to hear you. We will do that at the end. And I want to--if we--I’m reluctant to even throw this out there, but if we have time at the end, which I don’t really know that we will, because this is such an important subject, I’m open to discussing a couple other things, maybe even afterward. But this is a town hall on property tax. More than happy to field questions on other subjects. We try to be very responsive to emails. I’ll take a phone call or have coffee with anybody on any subject. But tonight, we’ve got to focus on property tax. And I would ask you to--certainly, we want to get your perspective. This bill has not been introduced yet. It’s complete, but it’s not been introduced. So Frank is still looking for feedback and input. But I do just want to encourage you to ask questions, not necessarily make too many statements. We want to get as many questions in as we can. Obviously, if there’s some relevant background information, we’re glad to hear about it, but we want to keep it efficient. I do want to, as your representative, give you a couple very quick legislative updates. First and foremost, our district office is on Leader Heights Road. That information’s over there for you. Again, Michelle and Michael staff that Monday through Fridays, 9:00 to 4:30. I am extremely blessed to have them. And our main focus is to provide service for you. Pretty much anything of a government nature and even beyond, we will either help you or we will find someone who can. So don’t ever be shy to call or stop in. And I am more than happy to meet with you personally. You elected me to do a job. You are our customer. And so whatever you need, worst case, we’ll direct you, we’ll do all we can to find someone who can help. And if we can’t, we’ll tell you that. But usually, we can at least add some value. So don’t be shy about that. I have joined what’s called the Common Sense Caucus. Frank is a member of that. It was created by Dan Mau, a more senior member out in Adams County, and Dawn Kiefer, a sophomore member up in Dillsburg. Common Sense Caucus is really a watchdog, like a budget halt kind of group. I share that, one to update you on that. But there’s a whole component to property tax that involves the underlying spending and root causes and debt that we have. We are doing what we can to address that. Frank and I have inherited an $80 billion, I believe is the number, pension debt, primarily about, I think it’s 75-ish or percent. The majority of that’s teacher pensions that we are committed and obligated to pay, and every intention of doing so, by the way. The rest is other state employees. So we come to the table, and Frank’s been at it two years longer than I have and infinitely more qualified to address it, as you’ll hear in a second. But there’s a lot of things we’ve inherited. I don’t share that as an excuse, but this issue didn’t get created overnight. And so that’s why I really wanted Frank to be here to explain just how--I think you’re almost all, with the exception maybe of Jim Rodkey, going to be kind of amazed how complex and nuanced this subject really is. But the Common Sense Caucus and also through legislative measures, we are trying to control and address some of the root calls issues. Frank is on the Peasars Board, which manages those pensions. But this is about how you raise the money, not necessarily the underlying root calls of the expenses. Is that a fair way to put it?
Very fair.
So we have to address these sort of one thing at a time, and I just want to explain that. So we get the idea that there’s root causes that have to be addressed, but here we’re talking about what’s the most equitable way to fund those obligations that we have and will continue to have. There’s been some reform on those fronts, probably not significant enough, but at least starting to move in that direction. Most notably, when I got to Harrisburg, I asked a senior member with some business experience, “Do we have any folks with business experience here?” And the answer is, “Not a whole lot.” Frank does. But we’ve started the Economic Growth Caucus. There’s 15 members and growing. There’s six of us freshmen, nine senior members, and they’ve asked me to be the chairman of that. So that’s pretty neat for a freshman. I’m chairing that caucus, and we’re looking at ways to make Pennsylvania more business-friendly. We do an absolutely, inexcusably pitiful job of attracting and retaining business here. We continually rank in the bottom 10 or 20% when it comes to economic development opportunities, business friendliness. We should be able to be in the top five or 10 states, even if we just all packed up and went home from Harrisburg. So we do a lot of things. And that, keep in mind, if we don’t have business, we don’t have jobs, we don’t have taxes. Okay? We’ve got to keep young folks here and so forth. So we’re trying to address that as well. But again, that’s not what we’re talking about tonight, but I want to make you aware of that also. We’ve got to keep that economic engine growing. The economy’s doing well at a national level, thanks to some of the policies here the last couple of years. But Pennsylvania is lagging behind in how our job creation and almost every other statistic, we’re doing just a fraction of what the leading states are. But we’re trying to address that as well by bringing some business expertise to bear. Doing some reforms on school code. I am a member of the school board at Dallas Town. I will probably be stepping out of that role before year’s end. As many of you know, we just had a new superintendent selection. We have a big construction project at Loganville. So we didn’t want to complicate that by me hopping off the board too quickly, but it’s probably best I move on out of the way. But that experience has been invaluable in helping to understand some of these causes that obviously tie to school property tax. The board has done a good job. We’ve not raised taxes in Dallas Town the past two years. We’re proud of that. But there’s ongoing pressure. So I think it’s been a good and valuable experience for me to bring to Harrisburg. I mentioned earlier that, you know, some of you that are here didn’t vote for me, but I represent everyone. I’m trying to be very proactive in bipartisan efforts, involved with a number of members of the Black Caucus from the House, predominantly Democrats from inner-city Philadelphia. We’re looking at dignity for incarcerated women. We’re looking at parole probation reform for some of those low-end, low-risk offenders so that we don’t have this revolving door that creates more and better, so to speak, criminals. We need folks in the workforce. These are things that are supported by our district attorney, Dave Sunday. It’s really this neat marriage of inner-city Democrats and conservative Republicans. And if you actually get together and talk with people, it turns out you can find some common ground and get some stuff done. So I visited the women’s prison up in Muncie a number of months ago, and that has sort of started to forge some relationships on a couple of things there. I was down in Philadelphia a couple of weeks ago, talking about inner-city and really statewide crime and violence initiatives. There’s a lot of common ground there, and I’m trying to do all I can. We won’t agree on everything, but to reach across the aisle and work with colleagues from very different parts of the state, very different backgrounds, and very different political beliefs. But if you just surround yourself with people who are like-minded all the time, I don’t really find, just like in business, you don’t get better by people telling you what you want to hear. You have to get other opinions. You have to be able to take critique and thicken up your skin. So I’m trying to do that. Anything you hear or see that you don’t like, at least give me a chance to address it, but I want to learn from you and get better. Career and technical education is a huge priority. 20% of our jobs are manufacturing in York County. That’s more than double the state average, and we’ve got to do everything we can there. And lastly, property taxes are by far the biggest issue in the district. That’s why we’re here tonight. I will tell you, as recently as 25 minutes ago, I had a phone call from a colleague in Harrisburg. I had a similar phone call yesterday from another colleague in Harrisburg that said, “Why in the world are you doing this?” Isn’t that a sad commentary? It’s what you elected us to do, okay? Frank Ryan’s got--maybe I don’t, but Frank Ryan has better things he could be doing. It’s a big, big deal. Folks that worked their whole life, that are now being taxed on the value of their homes, which are not indicative in most cases of their income and their ability to pay. At the same time, it’s extremely complicated. We can’t put all the burden on young families, because young families will move away. When young families move away, who’s going to take care of many of the folks in this room in the next five, 10, 15 years? When they need medical care, when they need to sustain these manufacturing jobs? Again, it all ties together. I can’t emphasize enough, 20% of our jobs are manufacturing. The vast majority of every other job feeds off of that manufacturing. I was talking to the coffee shop owner, John Paul, down in Shrewsbury the other day. What do you think happens to his coffee shop if Johnson Controls goes away? Okay? Johnson Controls was that close, I’m told, to leaving York County, the former York International and--okay? It all ties together. So we’ve got to be more equitable in how we tax. We don’t want to chase people away. We’re getting to a point where, and I’ve told my school board colleagues this, and they understand it, you get to a point, you keep raising taxes, your revenue will actually go down, because it’s hurting property values. There’s people not building houses here. There’s businesses not expanding here. So we have to address it, but understand, we’re all going to have to bear a burden. If you came here tonight expecting to like everything you’re going to hear, you will be disappointed. We are here to have tough, mature, difficult conversations and feedback. Okay? If it was easy, there’d be a whole bunch of Frank and I’s up here doing these town halls. And I’m not saying that to pat ourselves on the back. It’s true, is it not?
It is.
And so, and if it were easy, we wouldn’t need to go through all this. I think, again, it is complicated. I have learned, I know far more now than I did a year ago, and I still only know a fraction of what these gentlemen know. So that’s why I brought them down to talk with you. Last thing, goes without saying, we want to be courteous and so forth. I love passion, I love opinion. You ask whatever questions you want to ask. But I know everyone’s courteous. I’m not talking about, I’m going beyond courtesy here. I want to talk about empathy for just a little bit. Younger folks in the room, which is not as many as I wish, I want you to be empathetic for our senior citizens. Imagine working your whole life like my father did, running a machine at Caterpillar, working his butt off. My dad once worked 90 days in a row without a day off, mostly 12- and 16-hour days. Okay? My folks live in a modest home down on Walnut Street. Probably a lot of you have similar stories. Okay? We are taxing people, not just out of their home. It doesn’t always manifest itself in losing a home. There are homes that can fall into disrepair. People are too proud to say they need help. There are people taking extra, taking second mortgages on their home to pay tax bills. There are people living in stress and I would say fear of losing their home. It is an antiquated, outdated system. Unfortunately, the problem is not uniform across the state. There’s a handful of counties, York and Lancaster, and some up in the Poconos, and a few other places, that feel the burden disproportionately because of the way state funding, school funding works. Okay? So even though it’s the biggest issue here in York County, it is not the biggest issue in most counties across the state. It is tremendously challenging, and I can’t commend Frank enough for trying to get--remember these numbers. You need 102, 51, and 1. We need 102 representatives to vote yes in the House. We need 51 senators, and we need one governor to sign it. And if you think that’s an easy task, it is not. If you think this is going to be feel-good, pleasant discussion, it is not. Okay? So some empathy for our senior citizens. Seniors, some empathy for working families. You look at the statistics, raising a couple of kids today for young couples, it’s more expensive than ever. I met a young couple down in Fawn Grove the other day. They’ve moved from New Freedom to Maryland in large part because of taxes, property taxes. Can you imagine that, losing young, working families because of property taxes to Maryland? Which is nothing against Maryland, but they’re traditionally a high--well, they don’t drive very well. But just kidding, there’s probably a lot of former--that’s our little--and we don’t know how to pick crabs. Okay, so we’re even. But, you know, Maryland’s traditionally, we used to have that influx of people coming into the southern end of the county from Maryland. There’s still some of that. It’s almost, there’s at least some reversal of that. For businesses, there’s a lot of businesses that are creating jobs and struggling. We can’t put all of the burden on them. They can close up their doors and find better things to do, too. And tonight, I want to ask for some empathy for Frank Ryan. Not sympathy, we’re not looking for sympathy, just talking about empathy. He has a very, very difficult task. He has had so many meetings with so many representatives and senators and people that are wishy-washy, and they’ll tell you they’re a yes, and then they’re a no. He’s got to get the governor on board, who’s a Democrat. He’s got to get Republicans in the House and Senate. And oh, by the way, they don’t get along all that well either. I mean, he is busting his butt doing everything he can. You’re not going to like everything he has to say, but I encourage you to listen to it and keep an open mind. And lastly, let’s have a little empathy for each other as we ask questions and so forth and express our opinions. I use a quick example. My friend Pam Nicholson is here, who is running for Register of Wills. Pam’s, I think, a fairly left-leaning Democrat. I’m a very far-right-leaning Republican. We disagree on a lot of stuff. We disagreed on Facebook within the last 24 hours. Guess what? We’re still here, we’re still smiling, we’re still friends, we talk to each other. Okay? My gosh, what if it was all one party and we all felt the same? And wouldn’t it be a boring place to live? It’d be a dangerous place, you know? Okay? We don’t want a one-party system. That’s called the Soviet Union in Mexico for many years and a lot of things. So we got to celebrate dishonest, open dialogue and disagreement once again. Okay? You can be opinionated and passionate, but we need not be arrogant about it. Always try to be open to the fact that we might not know everything, we might be wrong about something. So I tell people, “I’m opinionated, but I’m more than happy to say you’ve got a better idea, or I made a mistake.” Lastly, I want to introduce my friend Frank Ryan. I want to read Frank’s bio to you. I met Frank early on, before we were even sworn in. We were having a South Central Caucus meeting, and I did what freshmen aren’t supposed to do, and I actually spoke in a meeting. And I asked my colleagues, “Well, what about property tax? Because for almost all of us in South Central Pennsylvania, that’s our biggest issue.” “Well, Mike, we’re not really going to talk about issues here today. This is more leadership.” And that was fine, that was fine. But I learned that there’s a big difference voting for something versus fighting for something. And when I told you we’re going to fight for property tax reform, I didn’t guarantee you we’re going to win, because we might lose. But fighting doesn’t just mean lip service and putting it on a bullet point every two years when we want to get reelected. And it doesn’t just mean voting the right way. It means doing everything we can to try to get it done, so we can look you in the eye and ourselves in the mirror at the end of the day. And I’m not trying to be melodramatic, but when we said we’re going to fight for it, that means we’re going to fight for it. And you need to understand, there’s voting the right way and there’s fighting for something. Frank Ryan’s fighting for property tax reform. Frank was elected to the Pennsylvania House of Representatives in 2016. Frank is a certified public accountant and graduate of Mount St. Mary’s College in Emmitsburg, Maryland. Frank graduated summa cum laude in 1973 and received his Master’s of Business Administration from the University of Maryland in 1977. A retired Marine Reserve Colonel, Frank was recalled to active duty in December 2004 and served with multinational force Iraq until June 2005. Prior to his initial retirement in 2002, Frank served as the Central Command Special Operations Officer during Operation and during Freedom. In civilian life, Frank Ryan is a strong fiscal conservative and an expert in corporate restructurings and management. His book called Revolutionizing Accounting for Decision-Making was published in 2016. Frank believes strongly in volunteerism and public service. Leading by example, he has served on numerous boards of directors of public and nonprofit charitable organizations, including chairman of the Board of Directors of Good Shepherd Services, chairman of the Audit Committee of the Institute of World Politics, and chair of the Audit Committee for the Archdiocese of Baltimore. It gets better. Frank’s volunteerism isn’t relegated to meeting rooms. He walked 2,806 miles across America in 2014 to raise awareness of the needs of children and emotional and behavior issues for children with developmental disabilities. The third-oldest person to have ever completed this feat, which is amazing, because you’re like 110.
Yeah.
So I can’t imagine the other two that were older, but--
They’re over 105.
The third-oldest person who ever completed this feat, he has written a book called Life Lessons Learned: Amazing Stories of My Walk Across America for Children, to help raise funds for the Sisters of the Good Shepherd and their mission. Frank’s military service includes three legions of merit, the Bronze Star, the Defense Meritorious Service Medal, the Navy Commendation Medal, and the U.S. Army Commendation Medal. Frank is the extremely proud father of four wonderful children and eight super-grandchildren and his beautiful partner and wife, Sherri.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for the chance to be here today. Can you all hear me okay? You know, when Mike made the comment about empathy, I thought he was originally going to make the comment to be empathetic, because I’m so ugly. And then I heard him make the comment about writing a book about revolutionizing accounting, and I thought that was what he was going to say. Was anybody that would write a book called that ought to have their head examined? You know, if I could give you just a little bit of background about what happened. About three and a half years ago, my wife and I were getting ready to move out of Pennsylvania. We decided that if for some reason I were to pass away first, despite our life savings and whatever the case may be, we wouldn’t be able to retire here. And I felt as her husband, I had that moral responsibility to take care of my wife. We tried to do all the right things all our life. I came from an incredibly poor family from inner-city Baltimore. Then my mom took us to Fairfield, Pennsylvania, because she wanted me to be our brothers and sisters and myself near a farm to get that type of experience, since our dad died when I was three and a half. My sister was six months old. Really abject poverty. I started working when I was 11, and I’m not trying to pull out a violin, but being careful and frugal and taking care of one another was really important to me. And so I said to my wife, I said, “I would be mortified if I realized upon my death that because of factors outside of your control and my control, you weren’t able to be taken care of, which I think is my responsibility. I think Christ has commanded me to do that.” And so we sold our house. We had ready to buy another one. When the person who bought it said, who bought our house said, “I have a problem. I didn’t realize your school district started two weeks before ours. The school year has already started where you live. Could we wait another year?” And at that point in time, I’m not the type of person who would say, “No, I’m sorry, you’ve got a contract, best of luck.” At the same time, the person who was going to sell us their home had second thoughts about selling their home, and I thought, perhaps this is God’s way of saying, “Do this thing differently.” The same day, the person that I replaced decided not to run for reelection. And my wife said, “Would you consider doing this to try to keep the Commonwealth out of bankruptcy?” You see, that’s what I do for a living. I specialize in keeping organizations out of bankruptcy, because I remember what my mom felt like when she was facing that loss of a house, and the mortgage was $65 a month. I remember those days all too well. It shaped me for the rest of my life. And I said to my wife, I said, “I don’t know if it’s possible.” I was so sick and tired of hearing people say, “For 40 years, we’ve been talking about getting rid of property taxes, that we’re going to do it.” But that’s just the tip of the iceberg. So I ran for office and in a four-way race, won. Someone said, “You believe in term limits?” I said, “No, but God does. I’m 68. I don’t know how much longer that’s going to last.” And so as a result, I said, “Let’s take a look at it.” So what I wanted to tell you is that, in my Marine Corps experience, I was in, for the last 10 years or so, attached to United States Army, Special Operations Command, and part of my expertise was economic warfare. And I’m really good at it. Really good at it. And so I thought, maybe I can bring this expertise to bear to solve the problem. So what I did is, I said, “Senate Bill 76 failed before. Why did it fail?” And I went out and decided to talk to those folks that were opposed to all prior efforts. And the education I got in that process was unbelievable. So one thing I want to do as we get started is put your mind at ease about something. I’m not irresponsible. Jim Rodkey, my best friend, is not irresponsible. And I have phenomenal respect and admiration for Mike Jones, who I’m proud to say, after only seven months, I believe is a good friend and a comrade. And why do I say that? It’s because he’s willing to challenge the status quo. I will tell you this, and I want to be very clear about this. I’m looking for public input now. It’s an open comment period, and I have no intention of introducing the language until I hear from people. And all I would ask you is, allow me to respond to you and say, “I tried that, but here’s what happened.” I may get to a point in two months where I say, “I’ve heard from y’all.” The answer is no, it’s not going to work. I tried. And then I will go back to doing that which I was trying to do to begin with, which is to reduce spending in the state. And I’m going to talk to you about that. So Scott, I was going to ask you, I’m not going to do Death by PowerPoint, by the way, but I do want to hit some key points I think you might find useful. And Jim is going to come up periodically and explain some of his hand in this. Jim is with the Property Rights Association of Pennsylvania, Property Tax Rights Association of Pennsylvania, one of the founders. And I’m really glad to see my great-granddaughter is in the audience. Suzanne Stoltenberg, from the Northeast Regional Director of the NFIB. She’s not really my great-granddaughter. She comes from a much nicer family. So it’s one of those things. But if we could, Scott. What happens is, is that the time to act is now. I will tell you this, if we don’t do this now, in the next two years, I’m going to tell you that anybody who tells you they’re going to get rid of property taxes, it won’t happen. When we hit the next recession, the game’s over. And I’m going to post this on my website, and Mike, if you’re interested, I’ll give it to you as well, so you can do the same thing if you want to copy the slides. Is that, so you have a couple?
A few, 15 or so hard copies.
Fantastic. And I’m going to explain to you what happened. At the heart of the plan is a trade-off. Homeowners are being promised property tax reductions in exchange for allowing local governments to raise income taxes. You’ve not had any of that. And for the past two to four years, and Suzanne’s aware of this, because I’m an NFIB member as well. Suzanne has heard me say this, and others have had, we’ve got two to four years. I’m thankful for the great leadership that we had in the House and the Senate, where they have come back and due to some fiscal controls we’ve put in, the number is now three to five years. But on property taxes, the time to act is now. So if we could go to the next couple of slides, we’re going to see some critical success factors that happen. One, this is extraordinarily complex. So let me give you an example. I actually had someone from a major city, so you get to pick one or two. And he said to me, “We don’t want property taxes to go away, because it keeps people out of our communities.” Right? I think he meant me, but I’m not sure. So imagine that. Another, two people said, “I support what you’re doing, but if I support this, I’m not going to get reelected.” I hear that. I hear that a lot. And I realize there’s a risk. It’s something that families have to deal with if you’re in elected life. But I didn’t think you elected me or Mike to just sit back and pretend like we’re solving it. You want it solved. Whatever you look at, the unfunded pension obligation is a critical issue. I’m on the Peasars Board. I’ve been on for about a month and a half. I am a CPA. I’m also a financial matters expert with the SEC. Those pension obligations are constitutionally guaranteed. I’ve had somebody say to me, “Just cut them.” I can’t. I have a different perspective. By the way, I have turned down the state pension, so I’m not going to get pensions. We live within the limits of the Capitol, so I don’t get per diem anyway. My goal is to go in, get some things done, and leave. I’ve been very fortunate to have had seven bills become law already, which is unusual for a freshman now. Hate to say at age 68, I’m a sophomore, but I’m a sophomore. But we have a long way to go. If we can’t pull this off, and you are the key, I’m going to tell you this right now. I’m not going to introduce anything until you let other people know that you can get behind this, because there’s very few other people. There’s maybe 25 people in Harrisburg that will sit there and make this decision, and I can tell you their names, which I’m not going to, which will say, “I’m going to do this regardless of what it does for me, because it’s the right thing to do.” And that's what you want in office. This unfunded pension liability is driving your costs. There's two major factors to that. One, significant losses that happened to the pension plan in 2001, when we had the dot-com bubble in '08 and '09. You have to make that up. We have to make that up. I have to make that up. The other issue is, for nine years, almost 10 years, the legislature did not make the required, actuarial required calculation, which is an unbelievably boring economic term. When I was explaining it to my Boston terrier, I even put her to sleep. And I would just tell you, it's an unbelievably important term that very few people understand. And if you don't, and I don't want to bore you with the details, but if anybody wants to talk about it later, I'm happy to. We have some information on the table if you want a lot of details about this. But let me give you an example. In 2001, the payroll portion that was funded in your school district budget was about 2% of payroll. This year, it's 34.27% of payroll goes to pay pensions. And you can't do anything about it, Superintendent, correct? You can't do a thing about it if he doesn't pay. Now, let me make another comment to you. How many of you are aware that if a school district somewhere else can't pay its bills and gets shut down by the state and absorbed, that the other 499 school districts are liable for those pension liabilities? I asked, I'm an expert in this. I sent a letter to the Auditor General, the Treasurer, and the Attorney General, and I said, "Who's got responsibility?" And here's the answer I get back. And if anybody wants it, I'll post it on the website. This is a cost-sharing plan. In the event of an insolvency, which has not yet happened, it would be allocated amongst the remaining school districts. Now, if it's one relatively small district, it's probably not even going to be noticed. You'll see a little bit of a hiccup. If it's Philadelphia, you're all going to know it. We are expecting property taxes to go up at a rate of 3.2% per year for the next 30 years. Let me say that again. And by the way, that's assuming we don't have a major recession. And I can't do anything about that, Superintendent? You can't do anything about that. Do you agree with me on this, or am I putting you on the spot? Okay. I was just going to say, I don't really care if I am, but I thought I'd at least be polite and ask. But it's important we do it. Young people are leaving the state. How many of you have children that have moved out of the Commonwealth? You'd like to have them close by, wouldn't you? It's a problem. It's a challenge. Our jobs have left, be it Caterpillar, Tractor, BNY. I used to work in the steel industry, Lukin Steel, that was bought out by Bethlehem Steel, doesn't exist anymore. Our manufacturing base is gone. If you're in agriculture right now, is anybody here in agriculture? No one? In agriculture, I live in a dairy farm area, and I can tell you, they're struggling. These MS-4 charges are killing people. And so it's an issue. The hold harmless provisions, you need to be aware of. That means we hold the other school districts harmless in certain parts of the state that have had declining populations. It affects a few of the school districts here, but not by big numbers. So let me give you an example. A person called me from Indiana County, and they told me they had $100,000 property, and property taxes are getting really outrageous in their area. They're $900. How many of you would think what that price would be? In my county, $100,000 home would be about $3,200 in property taxes. And that's because her county gets a hold harmless agreement. What's that mean? Your county, on average, it's different for every school district, get a different percentage of money from the state. A Class III city might get 65% of its budget. In my county, Lebanon City gets about 70%. The surrounding school districts get about 14% to 15%. And it's a really major concern. And that hold harmless provision means the vast majority of the western part of the state does not care if property taxes go away. So as Mike said, we need 102 votes, 26 for the Pennsylvania Senate, and the governor to sign it. We found a way to get some of those in the western part of the state to come on board, and we're not going to, but I need your help, and we'll talk about that. Net result, it's an incredibly unstable foundation to try to stabilize. You know, I was raised, I was born in Baltimore, but I was raised in Adams County. And we had a lot of limestone, which York County does as well. But imagine, any sinkholes happen around York County? Yeah, absolutely. We have a sinkhole from hell in my county. We found it was a 180-foot cavern underneath Route 422, and apparently trucks falling into that didn't think that was funny. And so what happened was, we look at that, and it's like trying to build a solid foundation on a broken system. And so that's what we tried to come up with, and that's where we are with this thing today. And so on the next issue, what I want you to be aware of, as you start to take a look, see if we get to it. I must admit that we have to tell you, I would never design a system the way it is today. You know, I've been in business for a long time, 40-some years. I was in the Marine Corps for a long time. And anybody who would have designed the system that we had was not thinking through the economics of it or the reality of it. So let me give you an example. I want to bring it and put it in some real life. Again, I'm not trying to put this Superintendent in a tough position, but I will tell you this. Special education costs are significant. He's got no control over those costs. The special education fund formula is what it is. You have to make up the difference with property taxes. This is what we would call in accounting, a cost driver. The Federal IDEA Act requires a 40% payment by the federal government. Since the act was passed literally almost two decades ago, that 40% has never been paid, which means it's being paid for by your property taxes. You know, I looked at this, and we asked for a commission to be formed in my cosponsorship memo, and I couldn't get any traction on that. So I started to go around all the different school districts and all the different people who spoke against the bill, Senate Bill 76, and why they voted against it, because the former property tax bill failed before. So I said, "Why did it fail?" So I talked to people who were against it, and they told me why it was, and I'll go into that in a couple minutes. What they said almost universally was, "We should have had these discussions 15 years ago." And I said, "I get that." NFIB was unbelievably helpful about what their concerns were. And Suzanne, I don't know if you mind this, but NFIB, many years ago, had said, "Here's what my concerns are," and they never got addressed. So we tried to address those. We tried to address PSEA, had some concerns. PASBO had some concerns, and we tried to meet with those as well. So what happened was, about two weeks ago, after we saw that I was going to announce this, they announced the formation of a working group to go over the problem. That's essentially the commission. So because of that, I'm going to hold off on introducing my bill until I get more public comment. And I'll tell you how you can either help, or just tell me, Frank, I'm not interested, stop. And I'm okay with that. But if we do that, I want you to know what's going to happen to you if you do. We're not fixed on any solution other than that school property taxes must be eliminated. So do that. School property taxes are almost $15 billion, and they're increasing at a rate of about $500 million per year. And I've got this study from the Independent Fiscal Office to prove it. It varies widely from school district to school district. The unfunded pension liabilities are $50 billion for the school districts, and there's an additional $20 billion, $25 billion for the state workers as well. Proponents say it's a constant reliable source, and then you'll see that expression, R equals E, revenue equals expense. And that basically means is if the money comes in, so let me put that in perspective. We had $1,400,000 more in revenue this year in the state budget from tax revenues. Before we even had a chance to do the budget, $748 million of dollars that was already spent. I'm firmly convinced, you give government money at the state level and the federal level, it's going to get spent, and the better off, the thing to do, is to make sure that we stay in control and reduce spending. I need to be able to do this with getting rid of property taxes, because your home is collateral for spending, and you need to be aware of that. Critics, it's inequitable. It's an unbelievably regressive tax. You know, I tell everybody that you're but one life event away from losing your home. If a spouse passes away or a partner, what will happen? If we go to the next item? Property taxes increase, property values decrease. If you ask anybody who's in real estate, most of them will confirm that. Homeowners will never own their homes under their current system. You're renting it from the state, and that number's going to get bigger and bigger. Limiting job creation, and it serves as collateral for the unfunded liabilities. Benefits, under the bill that we're going to propose, seniors will save, but not 100%. And I'll explain to you why that is, and we'll go to the next couple ones. All renters, under our bill, was one of the major objections that we had, that under prior efforts, renters didn't get any reduction in their rent, but they immediately saw their increase in their net income tax and their personal income tax. So we tried to do that. If you take a look, property owners no longer rent the home under this system. And under the next benefit, you'll take more money in your pocket to decide on investing in spending. The entire Commonwealth becomes a keystone opportunity zone, which is this benefit that we give to companies to get them to move into the state, allow seniors to stay in their homes longer. You know, guys, what happens is, if we're not careful about this, when things start to fail, it becomes really problematic. School districts, because they share the benefit of the economic growth, and it's got... All the taxes stay local on our plan. So let me tell you what the plan is, then I'd like Jim Rodkey to come up and discuss some of the issues that he found from his 20 years involved in this particular debate. So our proposal is increasing the personal income tax with, it's called a local PIT, of 1.85%, and all of that money would go directly to the school district. Prior efforts had the money going to Harrisburg to be distributed out, and people didn't feel comfortable with that happening. I've been in Harrisburg two years. I would tell you, I'm not comfortable with that happening. The next issue is that we have a local sales tax of 2%. And what's that mean? And it's on the existing base. So the existing base is 6%, so you'd have an incremental 2%. And if we do the incremental 2%, you'd have a total of eight, but that money goes to the county to be distributed to the school districts to stay local. Under the bill, we have a thing called the Uniformity Clause in Pennsylvania, which basically says, "We can't limit certain income. It has to be the same tax rate for every type of income." So what I originally wanted to do was exclude the first $50,000 of retirement income. I can't legally do that. So the way I did it was, say, exclude all social security income, and then the item, and the reason, by the way, the reason that came about is, we didn't have enough money to do it. There wasn't enough money, and every time that we turned around to do this thing, it became more and more problematic. Then the other part of it, and this is the one that gets most people have questions, 4.92% on non-social security retirement income. And just so you're aware, that it would not be taxed for any withdrawal that you would make from the system. So note, if you put money in, if you made your own contribution, that money would not be taxed on the way out. So here's what I want you to be aware of, as, again, it's, Scott, we're going to just leave that as is, and then I'm going to call Jim up. What I want you to consider as you look at, and I've got a whole bunch of different information I can share with you. And then obviously, I think Mike would want us to open it up for questions at that point. What I want you to consider is, some of the quandaries I've run into in this, is, one, there's not a lot of unanimous support to get this thing done. We have a situation in the Commonwealth right now where younger people are leaving the Commonwealth, and we've got to get them turned around to come back in. And at the same time, seniors are on fixed income. The vast majority of seniors save, so the replacement taxes on the retirement income is $1.4 billion. The property taxes saved by seniors is $3.4 billion. So it's a net reduction, but it's not the 100%. I will tell you, if we insist on the 100% reduction, seniors pay zero. I'm willing to say that that's a way to do it, but I will tell you, it will not pass. Number one. And we'll be stuck with this system, and at this point in time, it'll be a problem. The other aspect and the final thing before I turn over to Jim, is I'm fearful that if we continue to have too much in-migration from out-of-state of retirees. There's a perception amongst us retirees, seniors, that seniors don't cost the Commonwealth any money, and that's not true. Right now, in our budget, out of the general fund, is $3.9 billion. And let me tell you what's starting to break. We're finding that ambulance services are finding it a tough time to make ends meet. In my community, one of them already is on the verge of bankruptcy. We're seeing that throughout the state, and the time for Band-Aids is long gone. If we don't do this, we're going to have a crisis. What I'd like to do is introduce my dear friend, Jim Rodkey. And Jim will talk to you about some of the issues, about the history and some of the other aspects, and then again, I think we'll both be happy to take questions. Jim, thanks.
I'm talking to a group of people, some of you know me as somebody who went around the state not too long ago, four years ago, advocating for SB 76. Because SB 76 at the time was the best we had. I still believe that, and I still support 76. However, my support doesn't get a bill passed. Their support gets the bill passed. You hear it, the magic numbers, 101, 26, and the governor's signature. That's what it's going to take. I've been in this fight for a long time. The last two years of the, leading up to the 2015 vote, I began to listen to some of the opposition's talking points. And instead of just dismissing this, I began to realize that they actually had some valid concerns. There were some issues. It's this idea of, I'm sure most of you at one time in your life have done a paint-by-number picture. And when you were very, very young, staying inside those lines wasn't easy. You just painted. You know, and your parents did a great job. It's wonderful. But as you got older, you wanted the picture to look more like it was supposed to look. You have to begin to look at property taxes like that. Taking a broad-brush approach, you know, and not caring about the lines, isn't going to help. That I already realized by going from county to county, and I was in a lot of counties on this issue, there were unique problems that were entirely different from the problems where I'm from. And we needed a solution to this problem, I began to believe, that was a little more complex. Something that was going to take these other factors into consideration and begin to weigh all these different facets of property tax elimination. It's easy to accept a simple approach for elimination. Let's just raise the income tax, and let's raise the sales tax, expand it to a couple of items. Initially, that sounds like a great idea, and I would still support it if it went forward, because I personally believe the most horrendous tax that exists is the property tax. I believe that everything about the founding of this nation, about who we are as a people, centers around three issues: life, liberty, and property. And everything is property, whether it's the property of your home, the property of your ideas. 76 would do that, but it's also going to do that by shifting the majority of that burden onto the working families. And we're watching working families leave this state in large volume. The out-migration is largely that working population. You lose the working population, you lose the PIT. You're also going to lose the SUT. When you do studies on it, you'll find that about 80% of the revenue of the SUT comes from people who are between the ages of 30 and 60 years of age. It's a bell curve. And the bulk of those people are coming from that. And then when you're taxing things like diapers and daycare and those kind of things, we were shifting that burden to that younger working family, and if they leave the state, that's PIT revenue that's not going to come in to help with programs. That's SUT revenue that's not going to go into education funding. Sales tax, as it is right now, the overwhelming majority of the existing 6% goes to education funding. A small portion of it goes to busing and roads, but that's related to education. Philadelphia, you don't drive school buses through town. They take public transportation, and a portion of that is funded. We had to look at all of these different issues. I thought, in 2015, I knew a lot about property taxes. And I did, and I'm not bragging. I have spent about 15 years of my life looking at data, looking at research, digging into this, looking at all these problems. I thought I knew a lot. When I sat down with Frank, and we began saying, "What is it going to take? We don't have the votes this time. We wouldn't have had the votes at all in the House. Even if we had managed to get that one extra vote in 2015, when it came down to the House, it would not have passed." And I knew that. But what are we going to do? What are we all going to have to do to make this happen? And what it's going to require is, all of us are going to have to have skin in this game. All of us. Everybody's got to have something involved. And we've got to understand, as hard as that may be. You know, I am very, very close to being that 65 years of age. being that 65 years of age. I wanna see property taxes eliminated. Would it make me happy to have a 100 percent school property tax elimination on my home? It certainly would, but I don't wanna do that by making my children, my grandchildren, or my great-grandchildren pay for it. I don't wanna not have to pay anything, so they have to pay it all. I believe that I have a responsibility, and I wanna say one other thing before I go back. Throughout this time, you know, you get beat up a lot, and some things you can laugh off, and some things are a little harder to laugh off. This one accusation really, really cuts me deep. Why are you opposed to education? This has nothing to do with that, in fact, this is about trying to save education. Frank told you where we're headed. How many people in this room can hold on to their houses if it doubles in 20 to 25 If you don't have your house, how are you gonna pay the school property taxes? How are the teachers gonna get paid? How are we gonna keep doors open? It's not gonna happen. Yes, ma'am?
I think the whole point being missed is, I'm 75 years old, my school taxes are $500 a month. I don't even have grandchildren in school, and the people that live in subsidized housing in these cities and all over, they have no responsibility for their children that are being educated, and that is blasphemy. It's not right.
Ma'am, the point isn't being missed, and the point is, we're trying to address that by looking at a local EIT funding option, and by looking at, at, at expanding the sales tax portion of this to include food and clothing. Everybody's going to be putting something towards this. And, let me, let me just finish, and then we'll take questions. This is not an anti-education bill. If we want to save public education for the future, we've gotta change the way we're funding it, because property taxes aren't gonna cut it. We're going to be hurting it, and I think that the school districts are already starting to realize that. You know, there's the expression, "You can only, you can't get blood from a stone." That's where many people are with their homes. We cannot continue to create this instability in our economy. We cannot continue to have a system that, that is preventing businesses from coming in, that's contributing to the blight issue, that's contributing to overcrowding in the inner city, that's creating transient populations in our classrooms. All these things are costing us more and more and more, all to sustain a property tax which isn't working. It's time to kill that and move to another method, another way of getting this done. So, with that, thank you.
With this, why don't we go ahead and, as we start to do this, take questions? Ma'am, I couldn't say, I'm 68, so I don't have the best vision, I'm not sure who was that asked a question right there, if you just raise your hand. This is one of the issues I want you to be aware of, and it was an outstanding question. $500 a month in property taxes is a big number. And, and what happens is, we're finding a significant number of, of people who are making the decision, "Do I stay in the House or don't I?" So, what we're trying to do, and it's very important you be aware of this, this bill does not cut any tax dollars at all, it shifts who pays it. And so, I, I don't know your retirement income, and I would never be presumptuous to ask you that here, but I would presume you will probably pay less under our bill, the way it's structured, and I could talk to you privately, since I wouldn't wanna do that to you publicly. But, but what happens is, if we shift it all from one group to another, we're going to have a major problem. And, well, let me say it differently, not a major problem, it won't pass. And, and I wanna be very clear about something, and as you can tell from the discussion that Mike had up front when he did it, if you are in a situation where we find out that we can't get people to be willing to do it, by people, I'm talking about seniors and other voters, to say, "We need to look at this and think differently," no property tax bill's gonna pass, so here's what you're likely to see happen. We're already hearing the rumblings of it. Small reduction of property taxes, increase the PIT, and increase the sales tax, and you'll feel better for a couple of years. How many of you remember that promise when we were told about the casinos? Right? And how many of you don't believe that you'll see any long-term relief if that happens? So, that's why I've started with this issue, but I wanna just make one other comment, ma'am, your question was tremendous. And I'm so thankful for what the pastor said and what Mike said. Nobody's evil here. I, I spend a lot of time in the classroom, I was an instructor for the AICPA, our local school, school district had me come in to, to teach a day, and so, I spent hours with, you know, all the kids, and I even got on the floor to talk to the kids in the kindergarten, and I realized, after I did that, I couldn't get back up again. Does anybody ever have one of those moments, "I've fallen and I can't get up"? Well, I, I was one of those. And so, what happens is, nobody's a villain here. These are issues that were kicked down the street, and kicked down the road 25, 30 years ago, but it's a collective problem. If we don't solve it, though, here's what's gonna happen. The superintendent's going to be faced with putting more money into the pensions with an inability to raise the property taxes, because you'll scream. Then, he'll start looking at cutting back programs. The number of guidance counselors in schools has already dropped significantly. The difficulty and the complexity of the child in school today is more difficult than I have ever seen in my entire life. In one of our schools, we have over 100 and some children wearing ankle bracelets. It's, it's an issue that our teachers are struggling with. Please don't villainize teachers. This is, this is, we are all collectively punished because the can was kicked out. So, I'm gonna make this comment. I was in Eastern Europe when the Soviet Union collapsed, and what happens when it does is, you start seeing things break. And when it starts to break, you'll have, like, one or two school districts fail. General Motors was told they were too big to fail. Look how that worked out for us. The good news, and I'm embarrassed to say "good news," because as a Christian, my faith doesn't view this as good news, but for Pennsylvanians, the news that I would encourage you to be aware of is Illinois is likely going to be the next state who collapses, and we will learn from that problem. But I'm afraid that if we have a recession between now and then, there won't be time for us to recover, because of the losses in the stock portfolio and the pension plan will kick up the amount of the contribution required from the school districts. You almost can't make this stuff up. We, we are where we are, and, and it's important for us to be realistic in this process. But I gotta tell you, I, I understand, haven't seen my mom struggle, and, and that, the pain for people is phenomenal, from working families to not. You know, we made a comment, and just two quick comments. When I went to Mount St. Mary's, and I used to say, "In the 70s," but then people would say, "1970s?" Yeah, 1970s. It was $4,000 for four years. Anybody graduate from college in the past 10 years? May I ask you how much it was?
I suppose.
Right. And someone says, "Well, that's inflation." No, it's not. Not even close. When I graduated from the Mount, I, I went to a group, it was a small organization, I forget the name of the company, oh, the Marine Corps, and my starting salary was, well, it was originally $72 a month, once a month, but it became about $12,000 a year. May I embarrass you if you don't mind? May I ask you what your starting salary was at your first job?
$13.
$13 an hour. So, when you look at those numbers, you're looking at roughly about $30,000 a year?
Yeah.
Okay. How's that for an old guy? What do you think? You're welcome. Right. And God, I pray to God that number's right, because if it's not, I'm gonna be embarrassed. But if you look at that number, the problem that happens is that that $60,000 still owed, divided by the $30,000 salary is a 2-to-1 ratio. In my case, it's $4,000 divided by 12, it's a .33. So, it's well beyond inflation. And so, we're, we're doing that to younger folks. Healthcare costs. When I started my career as a, as a civilian, my employer paid 100 percent of her healthcare cost. It was about $80 a month. It's certainly not that now. So, please have empathy for each other, and have seniors across the prescription drugs, I mean, I could buy a house with what some of the prescription drugs cost. And so, it's really a struggle, and everybody, and so, I'm trying to balance something out. There's no pride of authorship. But anyway, with that, any other questions?
I have some to the microphone.
Oh, yeah, please, I'm sorry, please come to the microphone if you could. Sir, do you wanna come to the microphone up here?
Just quickly, I noticed Dr. Lamont is here from Southern School District, and I saw Dr. Ron Dyer from Dallas Town earlier, he, there's a, it's not his family, but he's got a funeral for a member of, he attends church here, so he would've been here this evening as well, so I do wanna thank, Jim Roberts is also the president of the Southern, or of Southeastern School Board. If I'm missing anybody, I apologize, but I do wanna thank you folks for coming out here. Well, I know we have other school board members, but that'd be here, but, but we do have, we have some from Dallas Town, but I did wanna, I saw Dr. Lamont there, thank you for being here, and, sorry, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I have a bunch of questions, but I'll limit them. The first thing, you have a lot of percentages here, 1.85, 2 percent.
There are eight years.
Oh. I'm sorry, I hope you'll forgive me if I'm skeptical.
You should be.
But here, you have a lot of percentages, 1.85, 2 percent, 4.92 percent. Now, that's today. What is it gonna be 10 years from now, and what in your bill limits it to what it is here?
First of all, everybody should be skeptical. I, I don't take offense at that, I, I don't. As an example, we've got a hold-harmless provision in the bill. So, first of all, in order to raise these percentages, they have to be raised in Harrisburg, and if there's, I understand, I understand, but, but let me make a comment to you, it is harder to raise a tax rate in Harrisburg than it is to raise a property tax in a school board, which means the backstop for us will be Harrisburg.
Why not just limit it, period, no changes?
Because I, I-
Because, you know, we're the ones paying, especially as seniors, I'm gonna be retiring in two years.
Yes, sir.
And here you are, the first thing you wanna do is take away my retirement company that was part of my compensation for, for the 40 years I worked for this company.
Sir, I, first of all, I don't wanna do that. What I wanna recognize is that we don't have a choice, and so, what will happen is, in three to five years, if we don't solve this problem, with the outflow of younger people, and the constraints that the school boards are under with pensions, they're gonna come back to you and say, "Here's your property tax."
What's to keep that from being 8 percent in a couple of years?
Yes, sir, I, I understand.
When that happens.
We've got myself, Mike Jones, significant other members of the, of the delegation in York County, in Lebanon County, Senator Kristin Phillips-Hill.
Well, that's fine today, but what about three years, or five years, when you're not here?
Can I, can I just jump in here? Did your taxes go up last, your property taxes go up last year?
Uh, just a couple percent, I didn't really notice.
But they went up. Did they go up the year before that?
Probably, yeah.
In the city where I'm from, in the last seven years, my property taxes went up. What I can guarantee you is, if we don't do this, your property taxes will go up, and I will guarantee this as well. You don't pay your property tax with your house, you pay it with your income. The property tax is already a tax on your retirement income.
Then, why, aren't you already trade, then you're just trading one for another?
No, we're broadening the base, and by broadening the base, it's less for everyone. That way, and we're shifting from, we're going to what would be, when it comes to an income tax, more of a flat tax, the more you earn, the more you pay, but it's all based on, so it becomes a flat tax on everyone, which is not the case when it comes to the property tax. Depending on who you talk to, you're looking at paying between 1 percent and 24 percent of your income towards the property tax. That's not gonna happen under this bill.
Yeah, and Jim, Jim's right on that, but let me also make this comment. Each individual person is going to find a different, but I do wanna answer your question directly. Until we hold everybody accountable for this spending, as an example, I'm pretty angry that $748 million got spent last year without any authorization, and we had to go back later on and approve it after it was spent. Why didn't that money go in to pay down some of the pension liability, so that these issues are not coming across? So, sir, I can't give you any guarantees.
I just wanna have one more question.
Yes, sir.
What percentage of all the gambling money is going to the school districts?
Sir, that I don't know the exact numbers on.
What do you mean, you don't know? That should be an easy question, I would think, for you. Mike, do you know? That was the whole promise of gambling and slots, wasn't it? That it was gonna go to the school districts?
That, that's the, sir, that's the executive-
Maybe we could have the, maybe we could have the school board tell us.
The executive, first of all, I wanna make sure, you said what percentage?
Yeah.
Goes in? I mean, it depends upon, is it, is it the online gaming, is it all these other issues? But I would tell you, that number on gaming is not $15 billion.
Well, but what, what percentage of it goes towards it? What, what benefit are we seeing from that slots? That's what we were sold on.
I, I understand, and-
Right? But they made the law, so the school districts didn't want it, right?
It, it varies differently from different school districts to different school districts. In my school district, it's a $50 savings. Anybody, how many, what, anybody else? Anybody else, do you know how much your savings are from gaming?
That doesn't seem like much to me.
It's not, it's not, that's, but it's not, I will tell you this, as an example, I get a lot of people say, "Well, shouldn't the lottery fund just take care of all this?" And the lottery, in terms of-
Lottery's for seniors.
I understand that, that's, I understand that. But shouldn't that take care of all the costs of seniors? And that number's 1.6 billion, the total cost of seniors is 11.1 billion, and it's increasing at a rate of $1.5 billion per year. So, I, I, I hear your point, and I get it.
What I'm saying is, I don't trust Harrisburg.
I don't either.
Not you individually, because, like, the gas tax.
Okay.
The highest gas tax in the country, probably, and the worst roads.
And, sir, let me, I, I'm with you.
And what I, what I found out was, not all that tax increase went to the roads.
You're right.
It went to other programs and stuff, so what is, my fear is, you start something this, at least now, we know that money's going to the school districts. Going forward, while they might decide it's going somewhere else, we need it more over here.
Well, you've already had that happen, number one. I agree with you about the, the Pennsylvania Turnpike Commission. I was one of the ones who advocated for the Auditor General to look at that, he announced $500 million was diverted, and that happened well before any of us even dreamed of getting in office, and that's why you got a whole group of people in the Common Sense Caucus, I was one of the founders of it, to sit down and say this. But without reforms, and without people getting actively involved, it's not gonna happen. But the one thing I will guarantee you, your property taxes in 20 years will double.
Well, I won't be around in 20 years, these younger people probably will.
Yes, sir, I understand.
Thank you very much.
Sir, thank you very much, and I, you know, I appreciate your questions, I really do.
Okay. Let me add it, if you don't mind.
Sure.
I just, I just wanna add a couple of quick things, and that's why we started out by saying, there, there's no real pleasant answer here. When you've got an $80 billion unfunded liability, to put that in perspective, our budget each year, the state money is about, well, did we just? I voted against it, but it was what, 35 billion?
35 billion.
So, put that in perspective, the $80 billion pension liability is 2 and 1/2 times our annual budget, correct? Rough, rough math. The other thing I would say, and your questions are legitimate, sir, the, you've got folks in the, in the other parts of the state, keep in mind, we talked about the lady with the $100,000 home in Indiana County paying $900, okay? If you keep relying on property tax, that disparity continues. If you shift to sales and income, those folks start paying their fair share. Do you follow what I'm saying? Okay, it starts to level it out, not just in York County, but across the state, correct? The, the other thing, and Frank's touching on it, our population is flat to shrinking, we're already 2 years' average age beyond the median age of the rest of the country, which may not sound like a lot, but it's significant. Picture a Commonwealth, okay, that is 80, our, our only growing segment in our population is over 85, okay? So, if the answer is, senior, we don't wanna pay anything, and I'm not saying everybody's saying that, and you keep chasing young people away, and you keep chasing business away in the process, who exactly do we think is gonna pay for it? Okay? Who do we think is gonna work in the assisted living facilities? Who do we think is gonna be repairing the roads? Who do we think is gonna be- Who do we think is going to be building the homes? Who do we think is going to be the plumber that comes to our house to fix it? If everybody is retired, then everybody just gets really, really progressively poor, okay, until they burn up all their savings and run out of money. So, and I'm not saying this like in an angry way, I'm just saying, these are tough issues. These are some of the reasons, very fair questions, that politicians would just as soon not stand up here and even talk about it. Okay? But it's, and no one's saying this is the perfect bill, that's why we want the comment. But understand, what I want you to keep coming back to, part of my answer would be, what is the alternative? And Frank's right. At least it's somewhat challenging. At the end of the day, I think all of us think government, or a lot of us, think government's too big and spends too much. But we're looking for, we're trying to be fiscally responsible, treat it like adults, not kick the can down the road, and do something that's actually sustainable. Sort of the lesser of two evils. I'm sorry. Sue, go ahead.
Yeah, I just have some quick questions. First of all, you said the county's going to collect the taxes and distribute it to the school districts. How, what formula, do you have a formula that they're going to do it?
We do, we do. What happens is, is the, first of all, for the first three years, there's a whole, I'm going to get into the knitweeds on the details of the bill, if you don't mind, so I appreciate that. The first three years, this is such a dramatic change. It would be irresponsible to put anybody at risk. So we have a three-year hold harmless, and vendors asked us to do this. So the 6% and the 2% would be collected by the merchant, would be remitted to the treasurer, who would then take the 2% off and send it back to the county, who would then allocate it. And every school district for three years would be guaranteed a minimum of what their prior property taxes were for that year. So that's important to be aware. So then what...
But if the taxes don't equal that, where does that money come?
That money comes from the portion, are you familiar with the Wayfair decision?
No.
The Wayfair decision was a Supreme Court decision about the collection of income, I'm sorry, sales taxes from out of the state. That money would go into that, that money's being used to balance it out.
So after the three years, then what do the school districts do? Because we will not have a guaranteed revenue, because it will be based on sales tax. If the economy is great, that's fine for us, but if the economy is bad, then we don't have that same revenue. So where does that difference come from?
Here's the issue. It's guaranteed on a couple of different issues. First of all, it's a sales tax and an income tax.
But again, it goes back to the economy.
I understand. We have the overall hold harmless, and it would have to be made up out of the general fund.
Which comes from taxes.
Which comes from other portion, and we're trying to force the spending controls. The, I can't remember where the gentleman is seated that asked the question before.
Back here.
Back here. He asked, just a great question. We're trying to force fiscal controls in Harrisburg. So let me give you an example. One of my bills that I passed in my first year, and I didn't pass it, but it was my bill, first year of my first term, saved about 400 million. That money was all spent, it went back into the general fund, was gone. We're trying to put constraints on the state level spending, but I do want to touch on something. This bill does require a school district to also be accountable for how they spend the money that they do get. Because right now, if you talk to others, it'll be, and by the way, I know many people say that the spending that you're doing is all perfect, and York County and Lebanon County people have been pretty responsible. But I think if you talk to your other school board members and the superintendent, they will tell you, we have about 35 to 40 school districts who've been less responsible. Harrisburg School District, as an example, has been a situation where they've been under investigation and were just taken over. Chester Upland was sitting, has been taken over. The hold harmless provision benefits probably 125 of the school districts. You've got other situations where Scranton has had misappropriation of funds. So if the answer is, I want to be able to run anything, any way, no matter what, then I would tell you then, you don't want this bill, but you don't want property tax reform either. And I'm not saying you, but I'm saying in general.
Okay, so I understand what you're saying, but you, when you were talking about this bill, you're putting the superintendent on the spot about things that we cannot change as school districts.
Right.
That, you guys haven't changed that. Until you change that, I don't see how you think the school districts are going to be able to be fiscally responsible, because we still have unfunded mandates, we have Peasers, we have everything. That's not changing. You guys haven't changed that. So until that's changed, our, the school districts are tied, our hands are tied. So you take away a revenue that we know is coming in, and you're replacing it with something else, and you still haven't fixed the issues that are the main issues that you just brought up with the superintendent.
Right.
So I think you got the cart before the horse, and you got it, you're going to have to figure out something before you start playing with our revenue.
We have, we have figured it, but I will make a comment. First of all, the ARC payment is already a requirement. And I will tell you that for years, you didn't get the ARC payment from the state. So that's one, is we're forcing the ARC. And since I've been in the legislature, we've had three years in a row where the ARC payment was made. And that's where about $5 billion of funds is coming from. That's number one. Number two, we did pension reform two years ago, and that just went into effect on July 1st of this year. We won't see the full benefits of that for 25 to 30 years. And we're on the Peasers Board, and Joe Trussella, the Democrat Treasurer, myself, Senator Pat Brown, and a whole bunch of other people are saying, what can we do to help look at the cost? We just did a commission on the reduction in the fees expense of looking at. Ma'am, I got to tell you one thing, I'm pretty thorough with what I do, and I look at these things with extraordinary level of detail before you do it, or it's not worth doing. And I would tell you that all of these bills that you mentioned are all in there, and if you say cart before the horse, until we can break the methodology, then no matter what happens, here's the spending for it, we'll never fix it, and in five to 10 years, 20% of those people will no longer be in their homes. This is a collective problem that we all have to deal with, from school board members to elderly, to other younger seniors, to young working families, and it's a complicated problem. And if the answer is to do nothing, then just be prepared to understand, that's what you've said you've wanted, but then don't complain when someone says nothing got done.
I'm not going to go down there, because there's more people who have, I just have one more real quick question.
Sure.
You can tell me real quick. Do businesses still pay property taxes?
Under this bill, they would not. They'd be paying them...
So the school districts are losing a huge chunk from businesses for property taxes.
You're seeing that they will be paying, some business groups are against the bill, because when you add it to the sales tax, the higher sales taxes are going to be paying, more than offsets what they're saving in property taxes.
Okay, thank you.
I just need to add something here, and this is totally from a non-legislator. We have a problem in Harrisburg. We all know that things don't happen, and they don't happen because there isn't a crisis. You have to create an incentive for them to fix these other issues. As long as the property tax exists, there will never be the incentive because of the ease of raising the property tax, until the system collapses, and then it's too late.
Here's the concern that I would like you to take a look at, is how you're going to do the divvying out of that money that you're collecting. You're saying the county will do it. How is the county going to decide that? Each school district in this county has different needs. And I think of things like, in Southeastern and Red Lion School District, the transportation costs far exceed what York or Hanover pay for that.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. The formula itself is the percentage of the budgets of the schools in the county times the total amount of the tax revenue to be divided, and it will be paid out on a monthly basis. So let me give you a real simple example. If five school... By the way, this is just on the sales tax piece. That's an important issue. The income tax goes to the school district you live in. Okay? So on the sales tax piece, say if every school district had a budget of $10 million, and there's five schools, that's 20% would go to each school, and the county then would remit it without holding any money back. And they're subject to audit. The reason we had to do it that way is because we also have 13 counties that have, that the school districts cross county lines, like October School District in Lancaster County is also in Berks County. And that's done on a, they take the school budget divided by this number of students in each county, and that's the percentage of the budget to the two county, of the two school, I'm sorry, the one school district that will be split between the two counties.
Okay, I still have concerns on it, because I think that those of us who don't live in York City will get the short end, because the decisions were made by the county in York, and I think York will benefit and the other school districts will not.
What happens, and if I might, that's a really important issue. First of all, we have a situation now already, it's called the Fair Funding Formula that we haven't really discussed so far. In 10 to 15 to 20 years, that's going to happen anyway, at a much faster clip, because the cities under, and I didn't, I did not pass the Fair Funding Formula. In my mind, it's not necessarily fair. Our bill will sit there and address some of those concerns. And I'm going to make one other comment. I didn't create the system we've got. I'm trying to fix it. And it may not be fixable. And at that point in time, I'll just say, you know what, I'll be, we'll be happy to help you pick up the pieces when it's over, but I don't think you want me to do that either. And again, I think it's really important that everybody be aware, there will be a point in time where it's not our decision what's going to happen. The next recession will trigger every comment you've just made. And that's got nothing to do with whether or not we do anything with property taxes. Thank you, ma'am.
You started off saying that not everybody was going to be happy with what you were going to say, and I can see that, I want to address that in two different ways. But I brought my property tax, school tax bill, on 120,000 assessed value, I am paying $2,712. Hallelujah for that person out in the western part of the state.
Can I ask you a question? Do you really feel that, I mean, I know you're teasing me, but I don't know about you, but when people design a system and it just got pushed through, and I don't know if it got pushed through it late at night, but when that happens, I don't think anybody, I've been up there long enough, I don't think anybody did it deliberately, but when I start talking about actuarially assumed earnings rate, you should see the deer in the headlights there. Right? My daughter told me when I started talking to her about it, she said, Dad, I love you. And that's what that means, right? No, no. And so what happens is, most people don't understand this, and I'm almost embarrassed that I do. Because trying to sell, and that's why this thing's so difficult, and that's why I'm not going to do anything irresponsible, but I have to raise it, because I can tell you, every other option we've looked at, it won't work. And if that's the case, be prepared for what's about to happen.
Now, that doesn't cut into my time, right?
No, sir, it doesn't.
Okay. However, I do live in Dallas Town School District, which is famous for the Taj Mahal Middle School that I passed.
Oh, so I don't need my calculator?
No.
Okay, I thought I did.
And the addition that's happening to the Springfield Loganville School, where I did the math, I'm like you, I did the math. The current amount of square footage per student that it had before, the all these extra square feet that are going on, the amount of students per square foot is, boom, you know, going to go a whole lot down. So they're going to have a whole lot of extra space there per student per square foot. But that's not what I'm up here for. To me, the property tax elimination is best for seniors. I think that's the people it's best for, we're talking about people losing their homes. Well, can we guarantee that the new taxes of 1.85, 2%, 4.92% won't cost them more than the property tax now? Now, wait a minute, sir, don't get into it yet. I don't care.
I was looking at you. I'm elderly, I'm trying to lean on the podium.
I don't care if I don't pay any...
That's my hearing aid.
Oh, okay, all right.
No, I'm kidding, no, it's not really.
I'm used to projecting on a whole soccer field, so I don't care if I don't save any money by moving to the new plan. I trust that somebody will. I do have a problem seeing how renters, you know, will benefit, because they ain't going to get that much savings from the people who own the building, you know, not having property tax. And then they're going to have to pay the 1.85, the 2%, and possibly some 4.92%. So I just want to make sure, you said you do things very specifically.
I do.
And address particular issues. I hope I'm going to save a little bit as a senior, but, you know, it's what it is now, so it doesn't matter that much if I save a whole lot. But, you know, renters, are they really going to, I don't see how they save any money.
Let me make a couple of comments to you. First and foremost, under my own bill, I pay more. Right? Because I've been very prudent and frugal my entire life. So there are people who have saved and done some things, and I feel badly about that, that that's the case, because I feel like, and I've had a lot of people say this comment, I've done all the right things all my life, and now I'm getting punished again. One of the things that frosts me like you can't possibly imagine, is when I hear someone tell me that social security is an entitlement. No government put one penny of that money into the system. And I'm as skeptical about this as you are. I am. But I will tell you, when it collapses, right, and it collapses under its own weight, you won't have to even worry about those kinds of issues. I've been in seven nations in my life that have collapsed economically. And I can tell you, it's ugly when it does. Do I think that's going to happen? No, I don't. Do I think you're going to see that happen in Illinois? Yeah, I do. You're already seeing that kind of issue already, when they've cut back on safety officers in other areas. So I don't want to be melodramatic. My fear is, we will kick this can down the road so long, that when we do realize it's an issue, it's too late. And so I'll just give you an example. When I walked across the United States five years ago, and when I walked across, I got done, I lost a lot of weight. And after I stopped walking 25 miles a day, I put some weight back on. So I went to, you know, my normal physical, and the guy, when I got on the scale, it said, please weigh one person at a time. And so, does anybody else have a scale like that?
Yeah.
And so the doctor said, look, Frank, you're 67 at the time, you're prediabetic, you've got this issue, and this, this is what it's going to look like if you don't take care of yourself. So I went out and I started working out and running and walking again, had problems, as you can see, I have a little bit of a limp from my walk across the country, dropped the weight, all the blood pressure and all that stuff's better, and I had time. Had I become diabetic and tried to fix it, the problem would be significantly more difficult. So I'm going to say the same analogy to you about the school districts. I hear you, and the gentleman's comment, I'm particularly sensitive about, relative to, do you trust the system? No, you know what, I don't. I don't trust it. But I'm going to be honest with you, as a Marine, I don't trust government. So you're, I'm not the right person to ask. Do I think that somebody's going to have some way, one shape or form to do it? I can tell you, we're going out of our way to make sure that we use every control possible, but without removing, and Jim said it clearly, without removing the collateral of the home, there was absolutely no incentive. That being said, we are doing a whole series of things to try to fix it as it is, but your point's well taken.
Well, don't misunderstand me. Well, don't misunderstand me. I'm not, I am totally in favor of what you're doing. And I said, if I don't save any money, it's okay, because I trust that it's going to help somebody, you know, who may lose their house. I'm just saying, I can't see how you can sell it to renters. Renters are going to be people who are going to object, because if they look at this thing like me, they're going to say, how am I going to save enough money out of what, you know, my guy who's, who's renting the house to me is saving out of, you know, property tax to afford all those other new taxes?
I'm going to give you the two different scenarios. When I talk to the, to the landlord trade associations, the people, there are some companies that are corporate real estate investment trusts, and they pass it on. I actually had a meeting with Mike's office six months ago, six months ago, when we talked to some of the people, I've talked to a lot of realtors. And what the comment was, if you're a real estate investment trust, when the taxes go up, you pass it on. They said that's an easy calculation for them to be able to do it, and it would get passed on to them as, as a lower rent. The end of the lease, the lease is always negotiable, so that can go back up or it could go down. I've been in periods of time when you could, could not give apartments away. We're in a tight market right now. There's another group of landlords that we made accommodations for. There are the people that are, I just talked to one on the way over here tonight. One or two units, maybe three units, out of compassion for their tenants, they didn't pass on the increase. So what they have, there's a provision in our bill that says, you do a five-year look back. If the property tax saved on the property is $100, and you only raise rent 50, and that, you only have to drop it by 50. So, sir, that's the enforcement mechanism.
So understand, I am totally in favor of this. Something has got to be done. We got politicians who kicked the can down the road too many times and for too long. Hallelujah for what you're doing. And I did cross over from prediabetic to diabetic.
I'm sorry, sir.
Another quick thing here, we want to get through the questions, but there's something called the uniformity clause, and Frank probably knows more than I do, but the uniformity clause says, basically, everybody, business, rich, poor, have to pay, this is constitutional in the state constitution, have to pay the same rate. So, Sue, your question was a good one. It's actually, quite frankly, I don't necessarily agree completely, but like, I don't personally think, having been in business my whole life, and a leader and an owner of a business, or a part owner at least, at least in our company, I didn't see property, it wasn't even one of our top 10 issues. Now, other people that have a lot of property, but not a lot of profit, they care a lot. However, if you say we're going to, so I'm not, conceptually, I think if we just eliminated on homesteads, that's helpful. Renters, I grew up in an apartment my whole life, I'm, I feel for them, but a lot of renters are transient coming through the community. So there is an argument that if you buy a home and want to stake your claim here and commit to the community, then you're going to get a better savings. I can sort of justify that. But I believe if we were to continue to tax business, but not tax property owners, we violate the uniformity clause, and it's at least subject to legal challenge. And if you say, well, let's change the uniformity clause, that has to pass both houses, two cycles in a row, and go to a referendum, that's a minimum of a three or four year change. So, we're also hamstrung by that constitution. I just want to throw that out, because I think it's a fairly big point, but, sorry, sir, go ahead.
Got a question, got a question.
Yes, sir.
A real world question.
I'm sorry, sir, I couldn't hear you.
It's called a real world question?
Oh, yes, sir.
My mother lives in the courtyards in Shrewsbury. All those retired, all these retired people, can you hear me? I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I don't know if it's all that.
I'm sorry. I'll go over it again. My mother lives in the courtyards in Shrewsbury. Okay, is that better? Okay. All right. So, all those people live there. You're going to give me a tax cut, and yet you're going to raise the taxes on these non-working people, retired people, not homeowners. You're going to raise their taxes 1.8%, 4.95% on their retirement, that is a pension. My mother gets $500 a month in a pension, and you're going to tax 5% on that, and then you're going to do this another 1.8% on what she has to buy, and then a 2% sales tax? So I can get a tax cut?
So first of all, let me, let me be, that's, I'm glad you asked that question. The number 1.85 and 4.92 are not additive.
What does that mean?
The 4.92 includes the 1.85. So that's, so you're aware. And that, thank you for asking that question, if that's not clear.
All right.
Now, let me make another comment. At $500 a month-
Yeah.
-she's below the income tax debt forgiveness in Pennsylvania, she'll pay zero. It's called the special tax forgiveness provision. If your family-
No, no, she, she makes more than that, because she gets social security.
But social security's not taxable under my bill.
It is now.
No, sir, it's not. Social security is not taxable.
Okay. I'm sorry about that.
Now, listen, I've tried, you know, but I want to bring this up, because this is important. I've, I've done, gone through 500 different types of algorithms on this thing. The uniformity clause, and by the way, I'm, as a Marine, I'm really thankful that we're all constrained by constitution. Mike believes in it, Jim believes in it, and I know you all do here, but that's why we did it the way we did it. So social security is not taxable. And, and the, the, on the other income, of retirement income, it, there's a special tax forgiveness provision. So your mother, from what you described, is it, did you say your mother or mother-in-law? I couldn't hear you.
Mother.
Your mother. Well, but God bless her, first of all. Second of all, let me make a comment. She may actually make out. I don't know the name of that-
Oh, that's wonderful. Yeah, no, not really.
I don't know if that's-
She's not, trust me. None of the people in there are making out.
But sir, let me ask you a question.
But you want them to pay a sales tax on their stuff?
But let me ask you a question. Is that an assisted living facility or continuous care facility? I don't know. Okay.
Apartments.
They pay, they pay property taxes.
Right.
That would get rebated and reduced into monthly fee to the tenants.
Is that in the law?
Yes, sir, it is. Well, it's not, by the way, it's not a law yet, it's in the bill.
I did my research on you, and that wasn't in there. It said, what-
Okay, go ahead.
I've got a link, okay?
Okay, I do too.
Mike knows my links. I always put a link when I talk to Mike on Facebook.
Sure.
I back up everything I say on Facebook. And, you come up with this stuff about the, you know, the world's going to end, the, uh, the depression or whatever, recession in '01 was a Republican. The repression, recession in '08 was a Republican. We have a Republican now. The other thing I wanted to bring up, I did a little checking on you. The last time you brought this up, 55% of the people were against your vote. 55% of the people. Do you want the link? I've got the page here.
When you say bring it up, where was it brought up? Because it's never been brought up for a vote.
Well, the last time you brought it up, 55% of the people were against it.
There was, it's never been brought up before, sir.
The last time you ran around with this, it was, it was in the news.
This is the first time it's been run around?
This time.
It's never been another time. I've been in office two and a half years. This project only got revealed about two and a half weeks ago.
Hang on.
And let me make another comment, because he's, there's a point, there, the, there's a circuitous loop about the exclusion of the amount of money, for amount of money you put in. So I agreed, a person asked me a comment, he said, could you put it in plain English? So I talked to the attorney today, we're putting it in plain English, but it's actually in there. This has never been brought up before.
I thought you said, you, Mike said you did this two years ago.
No, sir. We, we've been meeting on this-
Oh, previous bill. The last time you brought up the bill-
That was a different bill, and I wasn't there in the legislature when it happened.
It's all from, all right.
Bill, we can take it up offline. I understand, yeah. I think you're talking about '76, which was similar, but the, just very quickly, Frank alluded to this. If you happen to make a whole bunch of money and live in a very low-cost house, you are going to pay more. But the, the issue is that we believe income and sales are at least a better indicator in general of your ability to pay tax than the value of your home, particularly if you're on fixed income and retired, where you could easily have, okay, the, the other piece is, at least a little bit, when you charge sales tax, you at least collect some money from outside sources. You know, somebody here is, you know, from Maryland, purchasing something like that. So I don't want to belabor that. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
I live right behind the Loganville Elementary School, where they're doing the construction for the new wing on the school.
Yes, ma'am.
I find it confusing, because, you know, you're saying young people are leaving the state, and yet they justify building this huge wing onto the school that costs that much more money-
Yeah, I'm going to say one.
-when we're losing young families. So why are we justifying that expenditure? Now, on top of that, I, my question being is, what are we doing to limit the spending that the school boards will vote for, or I, I, you know, I understand, there is no oversight for what is spent. For instance, in the parking lot of the Loganville Elementary School, they painted blue paw prints on the asphalt entering into the school. And it's like, why do you spend good money on things that absolutely have no benefit?
So, if I may, keep in mind, Frank's from Lebanon County, so I'm going to, I don't, so I, I'm a little sensitive to mix, this is one reason I'll probably step off school board, but again, I'm, I voted against the Loganville project. We had a goal of 20 million, it came in at 24. I think it was a project worth doing. I support, now that we've approved it, we're unified as a board, but I did, so, I, I don't want to use this as a cop-out, but elections do have consequences. So, and, and our board is very, I can tell you, is very fiscally responsible, but the, part of the issue is, parents make a lot more noise than taxpayers. I've been on the school board for a year and a half now. I don't think I've seen a single taxpayer come to a meeting complaining about property tax. There's been some taxpayers on other issues. The other, the other more important part, because you're asking why is Loganville being expanded, this is one of the root causes. York County, endowed, we are actually growing. Okay, so the hold harmless, these counties that are shrinking are still getting, that's why they're getting 60 or 70% of their budget in Indiana County and Center County, all these places by the state, from the state. That's why they don't care as much about property tax. That's why that lady pays 900. At Dallas Town, we only get 26% of our budget. Somebody talked, so, so, the counties that are growing, which is only eight or nine, because the state is not economically friendly, but we happen to be in a county that's been fairly robust and had growth, and that's why we're feeling the impact of property tax a lot more than other parts of the state. The Poconos are bad, Lancaster's bad, Frank knows better than I do. That's why it's hard to get votes, to get the votes to pass this. Because if you were, if, if we were in, you know, again, Center, I don't, Indiana County or somewhere, Forest County, and we were shrinking, the student population was shrinking, we still were guaranteed, we were held harmless, and getting that same money from the state, which meant, per child, they're getting far more than we are. This approach at least seeks to level that field across the state, if that makes sense. So when we say income tax and sales tax, now we're treating all Pennsylvania citizens equally, whereas now it's hugely disparate, because folks paying three, four times as much in property tax in York as they are other parts of the state. So we are growing here. Loganville was there to accommodate growth, potentially to enable future consolidation and savings. So there was, there was a lot of thought put into that. I understand your frustration, though.
No, but my concern is, what oversight is there as to what is spent, how our money is being spent, and whether it's worth what they're spending it on. We're having to pay for these things like paw prints on the asphalt, which absolutely is just an expenditure, because somebody has, oh, we have a couple of extra dollars in the budget, let's go ahead and use it.
Ma'am, if I could, if I, that's with your local school board-
Right.
-on this thing. But if I might make a comment, it's getting close to eight. I'm more than happy to stay around and answer any questions anybody have, if I'm permitted to.
See if we can get one more.
Okay. But, but ma'am, it's a local school board issue, and you would still be electing your school board in the process, and, and you would do that. So I mean, I can't, I can't-
But the property taxes, the property taxes are related to what the, our school board does.
Okay. Sir.
School taxes are in good shape. We not, got to stop the spending. And my opinion is, we shouldn't have to pay for all the extracurricular activities, and that would really lower our taxes. And this, Mike there probably knows what it's costing to educate a child in Dallas Town School District. I don't know the current figures, but I'm guessing $20,000.
It's about $17,000, give or take, give or take.
It was that much when Weinbrunner was here, but I doubt it. How many people are in K to 12?
6,300 and some in the total district, is that right? 6,300 to 6,400, and it's around, round numbers, about 17,000.
But anyway, anyway, Florida has a Homestead Act that the first 25,000 of anybody's property is tax-free, and that includes a millionaire or 100,000 dollar home. Now, I have some questions for Mike.
Yes, sir. By the way, I'm just bringing out a calculator, so I can calculate one thing. I want to caution everybody. If your school district cost per pupil is 17,000, and I don't know the specific numbers on your financial statements, but I've read all 500 financial statements, I believe your payroll cost is about 60% of your total cost. Is that about right? I think it was .62, but I don't remember exactly. And, so that takes it down to 10,002. 34% of that is pension cost that the current school board didn't do one thing about. They are the beneficiary of neglect for the past 30 years. And that's approximately $3,468.
Them figures sound good, but that don't mean nothing to me in my tax bill.
Yes, sir, I understand.
I'm paying for the top-notch. Now, Mike, what is your plan?
By the way, if I could, for those of you that have to leave right now, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you very much.
What is your plan to do about this police protection in these towns that are dropping local police protection and using the state police?
Yeah.
Number two.
Right. We are looking at a way to fund, that everybody parries a fair, I've been talking with the county supervisors and so, or the township supervisors and others about funding, funding the police.
Not all of you.
Yeah, we can talk about that. It's a very valid, it's a very valid question. The governor has a proposal we're working through. Pam, sorry, go ahead.
I just want to, first of all, say thank you very much for your courage and conviction for holding this meeting tonight.
Thank you.
And not having any crazy requirements, and vetting and tickets and all of that nonsense. We really do appreciate it. We know it's tough to get up there and hear all this criticism and, and argument and whatnot.
Please take food with you, by the way, folks. Sorry, Pam, go ahead.
I'm a liberal, I'm a liberal Dem, but I hate school taxes as much as anybody in this room. And my question-
If I could just, if I could interrupt you for a second. I'm actually not worried about criticism. This is very similar to a Thanksgiving dinner at my house.
Anyway, I just have the question as to whether this sort of plan has got, has been taken up anywhere else in the country, and how has it worked?
In Michigan, they tried a plan where they got really frustrated. They had kind of the same experience we did. They couldn't get, everybody agreed to get rid of property taxes. Nobody could agree how to do it. So the governor came out with the legislature and said, let's just get rid of school property taxes and see what happens. I don't recommend that. So to answer your question is, they got together and said, after they did it, they had to do some things that were really dumb, because the school year starts no matter what they do, and I would not be supportive of doing it that way. That's irresponsible.
And the school property taxes came back higher.
Yeah, by the way, that's, Jim just brought that up. The school property taxes came back because they did it in an inefficient way.
But there's lots of states that don't use it that are better off fiscally.
Right, right.
I just have a couple of questions. 1988, they did pass a law that allowed you to replace, to lower your property taxes in the school district and raise your income tax. Southern York County School District did that. We pay 1.6. Everybody else, except for one other school district in New York, Adams County Tax Authority, pay the 1.1. Your plan calls for going up to 1.85 in income tax, yet Southern's already at 1.6, and all these other school districts are at 1.1. How does that get accounted for?
That's the next part of what we're looking at, but our bill specifically says the following. If you raise in that school district significantly more PIT than you anticipated, then the first thing you have to do is drop the EIT. The school district would still have the EIT as a potentiality. They still will. And we recommend you leave that there to make sure that no school district gets hammered and makes a tremendous mistake, because if any school district starts failing because of this, it's a problem. But that's in the bill. So let me give you an example. We've got about one school district in, in York County, about nine or 10 school districts elsewhere, that will raise significantly more in the PIT than their current portion of it, and, and by the way, and sales tax. And so, that would require them to lower their EIT on that, because they're raising more money. And it's all part of this hold harmless. That lasts for about three years, and then after that, they're all, they're all free to do what you allow the school board members to do or not do.
But that doesn't answer my question.
Okay.
So Southern is currently at 1.6-
Right.
-on, on its income tax.
Yes, sir.
Southeastern is at 1.1. Sorry, superintendent's still here, I don't mean to pick on it. They're at 1.1.
Yes, sir.
County gets the money in, distributes it out based on what you got in.
That's the sales tax.
No, that's the income tax.
No, sir.
What happens with the income tax?
The income tax goes directly to the school district you live in.
Right. So Southern already is getting 1.6, because it lowered its property taxes.
Okay.
Its property taxes are going to go away. It's only going to be able to replace that with an additional, as far as income tax, with an additional .15.
No, sir.
Or, excuse me, .25.
No, sir.
Well, do the math here. Come on, you're the CPA.
I am.
What's 1.85 minus 1.6?
Sir, if I, if I could explain.
Okay.
The 1.85's got nothing to do with the EIT. The EIT remains until the school district is able to get rid of it. So it's 1.85, and you're already paying the 1.65.
So we stay at the 1.6, and we get another 1.85. But other communities that are at 1.1, whose property taxes are also going away, they're getting an additional 1.85. So the people in Southern York County, from an income tax perspective, are going, and now you're paying 3.45, and the people that are at 1.1 are going to be paying 2.95.
Now, I believe, partially, but I believe of the 1.65, or 1.6, I believe .5 of that is your municipal tax.
No, sir.
It's not, so it's 1.6 school tax?
That five, that extra 5, .5% is strictly school board. That doesn't go to the municipalities.
So, so you're paying 2.0, you're paying 2.1?
No, we're paying 1.6, including what's going toward- You're correct. .5 is going to the county. Yeah, .5 goes to the-
So it's 1.1 is going to the school district?
Yes.
I, I mean, sir, I don't know, I'm asking you a question.
Okay, yes. Then what that means is .6 is going to the school district in the, in the other areas. The .5 is still going to the county from those school districts. So 1.1 minus .5 is- So, 1.1 minus .5 is .6. 1.6 minus .5 is 1.1. So, I'm still looking at a higher increase in one school district that acted responsibly with regards to property taxes versus other ones. How are they going to make up the difference?
I, that one, we can't, and that's part of the complexity of what I was saying in the system.
So, it's not fair.
Sir, nothing, nothing that I could do in this system, as broken as it is, will be equally fair to every single person.
It's got to be under the Constitution.
Sir, not under the way the system is structured.
Under the Pennsylvania Constitution, you've got to be taxed equally, which brings up my other point. Hang on just a second.
I want to be clear, though, because I'm not sure the assumption's true. They would not, they have less room, at the, when it's stable, when it, okay, when, if it were to pass, which is a big if, but if it were to, they would not pay more in income tax than the people in Dallas Town would. You would have a smaller increase. They would have a bigger increase.
Okay, so that's .25 versus an increase of .75.
You can't have a personal income tax by district.
But we're throwing too many numbers around. We're going to confuse everybody here.
But what he's saying, Frank, is, he thinks that, he's saying because they already have a higher PIT, correct?
Under the 1988 law.
Correct.
Yeah. If you're going to go to 1.85, and if it's not multiplied on top of the 1.6, sorry, there, if you're going to go to 1.85, the difference for Southern is .25. The difference for all the other communities is .75. That's, there's going to be less money coming into Southern than there is going to be into the other communities from this income tax.
Under the uniformity clause, the 1.85% increase in the PIT is identical for everybody in the state. The individual school boards have levied the local income tax, the EIT. They're two totally separate numbers. This bill is called the single, it's a single-subject thing. You can't combine the issues, and that would have to be attacked later on.
So, so...
But, sir, I've got to ask you a question.
My point about understanding of that means, that if I'm currently at 1.6 for the school district, I'm going to pay an additional 1.85 for this?
Yes.
And on top of the 3.6 we're already paying to the state?
Sir, that's correct.
Okay.
And that's the next part of the thing that we're working...
No, I've got one more question.
Sir, we got...
I've got one more question.
Okay.
How much, how much is paid by businesses and corporations in property taxes statewide? Because you're replacing that, they're not going to have any of those taxes. They're not getting their income tax increased. They're not getting their retirement funds increased. They're not seeing their sales tax go up. With all due respect, I just went to Giant today.
Okay.
When I went to Giant, when my bill added up, it added the sales tax on top of that. I pay the sales tax. Let's not pull a Trump tariffs or paid by the Chinese crap on me. That doesn't float. So, how much of that property tax that corporations and businesses are paying is going away, and is now going to be saddled into this income tax, sales tax, and retirement fund tax?
It's about $2.4 billion, and the cost report, it's called COST, which is a trade group that looks at this and says that corporations will likely see an increase in their sales tax of their consumables, not what they're selling to you. We're not talking about just the merchant. The increase in their sales tax will probably go up and enable to $3 billion, and that's why I'm not certain we'll have business community support.
Thank you.
Can I add one quick thing to that? I do want to add two quick comments there. A business that leaves, we get zero tax from them. So, if we just keep saddling business, you know, we get nothing. That's what a business that's not in Pennsylvania pays, is zero. And the second comment is, they pay a corporate net income tax of almost 10% if they're a corporation, whereas we all pay 3%. So, you know, business is getting saddled, the big, the corporations, C corporations, the large ones are paying that. So, and the idea is that they would invest more, create more jobs, generate more tax. Sorry.
Oh, hi. I just wanted to thank you guys for coming out and explaining some of these things tonight. My question probably has something to do with what we were just talking about. Colorado takes in $1 billion a year from their severance tax on gas companies. We take in, we took in $1 billion the last seven or eight years on the impact fee, and I'm just wondering, I know you guys didn't consider gambling income. Did you consider, you know, in Colorado, property taxes are subsidized by the severance fee on the gas companies, taking the burden off the citizens and putting it more to corporations? And not every state has gas in it, so they're not just going to pick up and leave if we tax them higher?
You know, I've done restructures of states as well, and some input into some of these. And I hear the comment about the severance tax. This is a property tax issue, but I want to answer that as best I can. You know, I live in a county, and Kendall, you do, too. J.E. Baker had some of the dolomite mines and other things like that, where our resources got stripped out of our community, and we've been left with the economic disaster and the environmental disaster in our community, and that's the purpose of an impact fee. And I'm pretty, I'm pretty sensitive about this issue, and your numbers are not completely accurate on how much was paid in impact fee, and so I can get you those numbers. I didn't come here prepared to talk about severance tax. So, as I'm prepping for my things, looking at 500 different comprehensive annual financial reports, I was focused on that, but I'm happy to get that data for you. But I can tell you, it's significantly more than Colorado raised, because what we did in impact fee in Pennsylvania was more than the severance tax in Colorado, Ohio...
Westford, yeah.
Westford, Virginia, and one other state. So, that being said, we have a lot of people in the legislature that are actually considering some of those issues and saying, "Let's take a look at it." And I'm thinking that everything is open for discussion in these concerns.
So, it's not impossible to look into taking some of the taxing from gas companies and taking it off the citizen and putting it, subsidizing our property taxes?
All I would tell you is that legislatures pass laws, and the laws of economics are not subject to any legislative body. I can tell you, every time we start to interfere with markets, just be careful.
I do want to, we do, we charge more in impact fees than most states charge in severance. It varies a little bit, because a impact fee is fixed. Severance varies with the price of gas. If you look at total, I have the report, I can show you. We collected more than, as Frank said, three or four states combined. The, I will say this, a lot of our colleagues who are fighting severance tax, Frank may not agree with me on this, but a lot of the, it just so happens that a lot of the places that are benefiting from the natural gas are the places whose communities have been shrinking. They, they don't have a problem with the impact fees, because they stay local. So, but they don't, they don't like a severance tax. Speaking for myself and only myself, if, if my colleagues, many of them in my own party, want us to continue to resist a severance tax, they had better come along and help us on property tax. Okay? Because I explained to them, I've, we've got poor folks living here, too. Okay? So, that's something that is not really, it's a separate issue, but that's something where we have to be able to negotiate and say, "Hey, we're trying to help you and protect your, you know, help your industries there and create these jobs you're benefiting from, but you've got to help us on property tax, too." And that's the kind of thing that you go back. So, there's, it's not just raising a severance tax, it's trying to negotiate on some of that stuff. I speak for myself, and that's not like anything controversial. I'm just saying, that's part of a, could be a bargaining type of thing, but that's a little premature at this point, but yes. But it's a good question. Sorry.
Would it also be very difficult to incorporate that into this bill? Because that goes into a different...
Not into the bill. Not into the bill.
Yeah, and, sir, that's actually one of the things that Jim just mentioned, I want to reemphasize. Under the Single Purpose Act, you can't mix and match topics. I'm going to make a request. One, I'm 68, it's been two hours, and I've been drinking coffee, and I'd hope you don't read too much into that. But I would ask, if we can just do a couple of questions, and then may, may we answer your questions offline as a courtesy, so that other people can go home? If I could just leave you with one thing I would ask you to think about. You can see the level of complexity of the questions you're asking, and you can see the pain and discomfort, and at the same time, I would encourage you to look at the average age of the people in the room. The people I am also concurrently hearing from in a different way are under 45 and have a different perspective on this. And I would encourage you, if nothing else, to go home and talk to your children and your grandchildren, and then let us know whether or not you want us to proceed or just kill the idea. But I will tell you, in two to four years, in action, that economic consequences will be felt, whether you like it or not, and the triggering point will be an economic recession. And when it happens, it's going to get ugly, it's going to be quick, and it's not stoppable. Sir, one, a couple of questions, and gentlemen, if I can, we'll come down here and talk to you. But I just want to say from the bottom of my heart, I love being down here. You guys were phenomenal. I, I'm thinking about walking across the United States again in four years. Anybody want, I walked right through York when I did it. Anybody wants to join me, welcome to do it.